Good evening. This calls meeting between the halls for the Shadwick County Board of the Water and the Uliac Highway and Highways. Time is six oh six. Please turn off your cell phones and put them on silent as I am doing that. Roll call.
Bensel.
Yeah.
Berksen, Metz, Carter.
Yes.
Coward.
President.
Esri.
Here.
Holderfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hertz.
Here.
Langenhine, Maxwell.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Michaels, Mosher, Nudo.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Whizenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Rosales.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Wyble.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
Ammons.
Here.
Anderson.
Yeah.
We have a call.
A couple of members don't believe they will not make it. Mr. Mosher, of course, is basing some Florida, which has been finding fine food in Southeast Asia, and Ralph is summing himself across the Indian Ocean. Seek approval of the minutes for the community hall, D and November 1st, 2012. Do by Mr. Petrie, second by Ms. Allen's discussion. See none all favor.
Aye aye.
Opposed? No. Seek approval of the agenda.
Approved.
Mr. James, second by Mr. Carter. Discussion on that. See none all favor.
Aye aye.
Opposed? No. Public participation. If you wish to speak to public, if you are still on or in back of the center, we have one full order. Mr. Allen Singleton. Do you think you can provide please?
Good evening. I'm Allen Singleton with Singleton Law Firm. I'm here representing the Shadwick and Solers. In these with respect to request for an RRO. The materials are in the packet and we're just here if you have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Any other public participation? So none was brought to the presentation from the board. Any communication? Ms. Anderson.
Well, I have some information to share this caucus like the government did with the Republican caucus, but it's like an early Christmas present. We found out today that the IGT, that the nursing home has been waiting patiently for payment. Heard today that we should be having a check cut by the middle of the week in the state of the town. And as you remember, Mr. Scapato indicated that the amount would be somewhere around $2.3 million dollars of how they will be paid in the first check is based on the next month. Well, the $2.3 was based on that, actually, second or third. The first check will be paid through June 30th, so it will be somewhere roughly $1.28 to $1.9 million dollars. And they will receive the rest of it in quarters of payment. It should be a four month residential. And we've been waiting so long. Wonderful news.
Mr. Wood.
I did not bring it up to you guys. Sorry.
That was all scary.
The other thing that I had a conversation with Mr. Scapato, so you'll be first to know now, is that a good portion of that will be used to pay down the payables. Take us probably to close to 120, 90 to 120 days. So he's going to put some in reserves, but it's great news. It's great news. Yeah, you can come to the caucus and take over.
Any other communications? Okay, I'll move on to our items. Highway transportation. Mr. Court. Oh, Mr. Carter?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Communication from me. I can't hear the desk mics at all. You're coming through loud and clear, but damn it, now didn't send anything through my little black box.
Let's have a test. Mr. Jay speaking with the mic. Just whatever you want to say. Tell me what Mr. Wood may be.
Can you hear me? Not as well as I should. Not as well as mine.
This mine's dead.
We don't care about you.
Thank you.
I'm required.
Okay, please speak loudly.
I can't.
Merry Christmas.
I'm calling the county's called Highway Transportation. Uh, many of the monitor reports that county and township motor fuel tax planning for November 2, 2012.
Move to second place on file.
Any discussion? Okay, other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Next thing is our county's media report.
The first and only item. We had a bid opening on December 1st for the aggregate materials for the townships for the calendar year 2012. These are bids to supply and haul to stockpile for each township. The aggregates that they request at their requested quantities. This is paid through township motor fuel tax dollars. So we have one large letting at the county level for all the townships and the money comes from IDOT through the highway department as the, as the aggregate is held in. We actually make payments on behalf of the township. You'll see a listing, I believe you have in front of you, and let's take together a couple of sheets. The first sheet is the resolution and the next two sheets are the actual aggregate materials, tabulation, as well as the sheet that shows you the comparison results based on last year's actual cost to haul similar materials to the townships as well. So see the prices are up just a little bit, but not up as much as we had predicted in our engineer's estimate. All the township highway commissioners have, have signed the bid results on behalf of their townships and I would ask for your approval of the, of the bid.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and set. Well, this of course is biased. John, I agree that most of the law, like four or five percent of the average sector on this, turkey grit and compromised township has gone up a huge amount. There's shards of turkey grit and actually if you define what turkey grit is, I forgot.
Turkey grit is actually what he uses to sand his roads. It's a very fine material and it's angular and he actually puts it down for grip on the roadways. So it's a very, very small chip is what it is.
And you know, why is it so high?
Marvin's the only one that gets this stuff and I actually don't know exactly why it's higher because it's a very odd material. That could be generally it. Actually, it shows the turkey grit is down considerably from last year. It's down 58%. Yeah, so that's a good thing.
Peter?
Oh, yes. I'm interested. This has gone up in pause yet I'm assuming that the motor fuel tax monies that we're getting are still on a downward curve.
Relatively flat since last year.
It's flat, not going down because I was wondering if what this was to be to your budget if this went up and the motor fuel monies were still going down.
This is all monies that come from the townships. This is not county funded in any way.
Okay, thanks.
Any more discussion? Uh, Stephanie?
Just basically a comment. I did actually go December 1st. Gary Maxwell and I attended the Rock Letting. It was an interesting process. I'd never been to one before and now I can say I have. And I would encourage all of you as board members to, if you had an opportunity to go, all the road commissioners are there from the respective townships and it's a great opportunity to let the townships know that we are there for support for them. So next year, I highly recommend that you put it on your calendar to attend. Thank you, Jeff, for a great job that you do.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I have no other business.
Anything going to go in over business? Anyone? Okay, there. Number one item, I don't know. Seven. I'll be on the consent agenda. That's it.
Thank you.
I'll make up to you if you need to finish.
Good evening. Happy holidays to you all. If you have a great holiday season. Let's get started on page eight. We have a number of recreation and entertainment licenses that we need to approve. First, A1, Alto Vineyard Champagne, 4210 North Duncan Road Champagne, January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012. Have a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion, John Jay. And Ms. Holderfield?
Yes.
Okay, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Our number two is Shirley's Oasis, 2705 CR 3000 North Enfield, January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
So moved, Stan. Lorraine, second. Any discussion? Lloyd? Okay, I thought you were. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three is CC Pinkhouse Incorporated, 2698 CR 1600 North Ogden, January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012. Please. Mr. S. Ray, so moved. First, second, Mr. O'Connor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, the Stop, 3515 North Cunningham Avenue, O'Bannon, January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012. Have a motion. Ms. Holderfield?
Second.
Second, Mr. Maxwell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7B, annual renewal of hotel motel license, Motel 6, 1906 North Cunningham Avenue, O'Bannon, January 1st, 2012, December 31st, 2012.
So moved.
Mr. Carter?
Second.
I'm sorry, wait a second. James, Mr. Whizenberry. Any discussion on this? Aye. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, the resolution authorizing county board chair to sign the location agreement pursuant to the terms of discussion's permit approved in resolution number 7966, case 696S-11 California Ridge Wind Farm. Ms. Anderson, Mr. Bensel, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And D, zoning ordinance case 689-AM11, request amend the zoning map to allow for one new residential lot by adding the rural residential overlays on district to land in the CR Conservation Recreation Zoning District. Now, Mr. O'Connor, first, Mr. Resal, second. We have discussion on this item. Ms. Petrie.
Yes, Chair. I would like to address my questions to both cases because they're in the same area in the essence of saving time and unfortunately I was not able to attend the ZBA meeting so I have information, questions to ask. My first question has to do with what was the vote of the ZBA on both of these cases? Was it unanimous or what?
As dear as I recall it was unanimous, yes.
All right, thank you. And second question is, I note that both of these cases are in flood area and there are already houses existing in this area. So my first question is, how in the rule do these houses get built in the flood area? How long have they been there?
Well, we permit houses in the flood plain every day of the week. That permitting process ensures that they're built so as to minimize damage and that's the requirement of the flood insurance rate program.
And is this totally the flood plain or is it flood plain up to a certain point in conjunction with where the proposed building will be placed on the site?
No, it's, the entire lot's in the flood plain. Both of these lots have an elevated pad which will provide a building area, I believe, above the base flood, but the rest of the entire lot is below the base flood elevation.
Sort of the principle that the Dutch are using these days, right?
I'm not familiar with that.
How did, how did this, this unoccupied building get on this, this lot without approval?
Actually, that happens quite frequently, but it is there and we have notified the owner and getting this case approved would be the first step into getting the necessary approvals to authorize that structure to be there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. O'Connor?
I have a question for John. Thanks, Pat.
A microphone, please. Thanks, Steve.
We are asking for a permit on that and it will be granted on that existing building the way I understand it. Is that correct?
There's a few more issues to resolve and so this is the first step, but there does need to be a permit and, you know, we'll take it one step at a time.
Right, thank you. And the flood plain problem, Pat, see it's, this is in District 4, okay? The houses are way up here and the ambros way down there, so they're not going to build in the flood plain, I'm pretty sure. Aye.
John, getting back to the property, and I agree with Mr. Connor that this area was sometimes being wide if you so thought the umbrella. The question is, Bob, do you know when the flood is calculated, this particular area? Is this like a recent calculation, an old calculation? Well, in my opinion, the best available data was produced by the State Water Survey a few years ago when they recalculate. Yes.
All right, Ms. Carroll?
John, what problem do we have to rectify? Well, the structures that, the structure that is there does not have a permit and it's not a dwelling. And unless you're a farmer, you cannot build anything other than a principal building to begin with. And so that's one of the things we need to resolve with the owner is, the building that is there needs to be a dwelling and it currently isn't. There are ways to make it into a dwelling as part of the permitting process, but we can't really start that until this case is approved.
Stephanie?
Well, that was one of my questions. If this was going to be a residence dwelling, eventually there would be owner occupancy?
It needs to be.
Okay, but is that part of their process? Okay, so with that being said then, more than likely they'll be financing this property? Has that been brought into the question?
I really can't say because they've, the current building has been there for, I think, three or four years.
So they'll be making improvements to this particular building and you don't know if they'll be alone on this property?
I don't, I do not know.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking at the satellite images of this area and it looks like right now there are five houses along here and this will create two more lots. I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the density of dwellings in this particular area, whether this road kind of goes to the north to support the suburbs.
Well, two homes would add, by the numbers that we use in all cases, two homes would add 20 vehicle trips onto that county road. It's a very modest increase for a county road. I think it's, I believe that's well within the capacity of that county road.
Okay, I think I would agree with that, but I know that in some of the other changes that we've been looking at the code, we're trying to limit the number of lots in a certain area for development and I can't see the alignment between that push that we were looking at earlier in the year and bringing in the lots here. I just can't put those things together.
Well, John's doing a good job, but I'd be, I'd be happy to discuss it.
One second, one second. Would you like to ask a question of?
I mean, will we suspend the rules and allow Mr. Central to?
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, opposed. James, sir, could you give us your name for the record?
I'm Allen Singleton and I represent Mr. Solers and Mr. Shadwick. There are two different properties, although very similarly situated. The, Mr. Shadwick is here, he's sitting right there. His property does not have a non-conforming building. Only, only the Solers' building does have the, the non-conforming building. The, in relation to traffic, I have visited the property and it's a very good road right there and it's also very, very close to Route 130. If you look at any of the maps, it's, I guess, probably less than a quarter section, so maybe less than a quarter of a mile from Route 130. So it's, it's really close to, to 130 and it's a good road and I think the traffic probably shouldn't really be an issue. I know the ZBA didn't seem concerned about it at all. And I don't want to cut John off at all. Please feel free to jump in.
Mr. Whizenberry, I think maybe you were thinking of the limits on lots when they're on best prime farmland. This land is not best prime farmland. It has an LE rating of 76, best prime farmland, cutoff is 85. So these are not, they are prime farmland, so it's not best prime. And actually, I misspoke earlier. This particular lot, under, using the base flood elevation, the State Water Survey, this lot is no more than halfway in the flood plain and where the home that they built is actually out above the base flood elevation. So I misspoke on that earlier, I apologize.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Got you. Carol?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Hall, just from, just for me to understand this, what are the pros and cons of building in this area which makes it necessary to have a special permit?
Well, the reason that they need the rezoning is simply the limit on the creation of rural lots. The so-called parent tract that this property was part of sold off the three lots they could sell without rezoning. An illustration of that is on page 34 of the agenda. So in that regard, this is no different than any other rural spot in the county where they sold off the three lots they can sell by right and now these lots need to be rezoned with the RRO in order for them to be good zoning lots.
More information, it's all illustrated on page 34. What do you have to do?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading a section number to page, sorry.
Forty.
Mr. Chris, can I, can I go back to the?
One second, Carol. I just wanted to page four. Okay. John, you're just already.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Hall again, in the special conditions the ZBA recommended that there be ASAP, the petition show, apply for driveway permit and all these things. So in order for the ZBA to pass this, you would have received these items already in order to pass it, is that?
No, in fact, the special conditions are things that the ZBA wants to make sure happen if the county board approves the rezoning. Now, on the, on the lot in question here, there is already a driveway. I presume the county engineer will have no problem giving us an okay on the use of that driveway, but on the Shadwick lot, there is no current driveway and so that will go through the driveway permitting procedure just like the rules anticipated.
And is it procedurally that this is done first or we have to do this first and then they do the driveway? Does that?
Well, ideally, this would be done first and then the driveway would be done as part of the house permit.
Any discussion on this issue? Mr. Wood? Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, please educate me on a couple of things. I'm in favor of both projects, so I'm not going to, I'm going to vote for this, but in your sightings as to how the ZBA approved this, you cite a lot of zoning ordinance to justify the decision and then again you use the LMRP, which are policies, goals, and objectives, which haven't been codified. And in some cases, we were discussing at caucus, there may be some things, not necessarily in this particular case, that is contrary to what's codified. So I keep, I'm wanting to know, why do you use LMRP when it hasn't been codified yet? What justification do you use to, to use this as sightings to approve or disapprove a project when it hasn't been codified, particularly when it's just a goal?
Well, the LMRP are the official, they replace the land use goals and policies. They're the new land use goals and policies. An amendment to either the zoning ordinance or the zoning map is something that is outside of the zoning ordinance and the guiding elements are the official land use goals and policies of the county board and that is what the LMRP is. Now, the county board is free to do with that what it wants.
I mean, we've had, we've had discussions on.
Well, every time we have this discussion.
Not, not much has been approved at this stage yet this year, so.
Every, every policy that's in the Land Resource Management Plan has been adopted by the county board. That's what the county board did when they adopted the Land Resource Management Plan.
But there's a paragraph in that that states that, you know, it's, are just guidelines at this stage before it is codified. There is, I inserted it myself and we voted on approval. So I just want to know exactly, if there's something that's in contrary, in conflict with what is the zoning ordinance, would you be citing that as well?
Well, it was my understanding that that paragraph was referring to those goals and policies that need to be codified in zoning ordinance. Several of them, in fact, maybe even most, actually will never have a zoning ordinance element to them. But if, if I'm following the last part of your question, if there was an LMRP element that was counter to the zoning ordinance, the general rule would be to follow the zoning ordinance, but again, this is an amendment, so it's actually outside of the ordinance. The ordinance doesn't give guidelines for how amendments are to be approved. And so, that's what we do.
Stan?
Just to follow up on Alice a little bit, I guess in my mind, if you already have ordinances in place that build this situation and you used them before, why are you looking at the land reuse plan if it hasn't been drafted into some ordinances to take, you know, to use as a tool? I mean, you've come through years past with lots and that and said, well, here's the ordinances, here's how I based it. So why are you now looking at that land plan since we haven't agreed to adopt that as an ordinance preused as a tool in your department?
Well, if the intent of this county board was not to adopt the goals and policies that were in the Land Resource Management Plan, then I- that were in the Land Resource Management Plan, then I think, um, I know that more than just myself are not aware of that. Uh, but again, they are simply goals and policies and the county board is free to follow them or not, uh, as you see fit, but they are your goals and policies. Now, I think the only thing in this case where that was, um, relevant was probably on the right to farm resolution, um, which is a resolution that applies anyhow, even if it's not in the LRMP, it's still your adopted resolution and it still applies. I, I don't know specifically what this concern is about.
Well, John, I mean, you're sort of confusing me because I know we discuss policies in this body and they're not a policy until they are ruled on by the full board as a policy. No one, in my mind, should assume the intent of that book, the land reuse book, was strictly a guidebook for future policymaking. I mean, there was a lot of work that went into it and then we were gonna take that language, you would bring an ordinance before us of some sort and draft that language into it, was my understanding and, and anybody that was in this room, I think, understood that. I mean, it's like when we started with the wind farm process, we looked at different scenarios, different things that we wanted incorporated and until this board ruled on it, as this is what the setbacks would be or this is, we never had the intent, just because we talked about it, that, that is what we wanted in the language. That's the way I sort of look at it and following up on Al's and I guess our, our situation at caucus was you're putting some of this language in there from that land use and we are, I guess, of the opinion that once it's being used all the time, uh, it could be used later to say, well, that was your policy and it's not policy at this point. The intent was to use it as a guide to set policy.
John, is it fair to say that this is a site, a site-specific policy that we are creating tonight, this and that? Is specific to the site? Well, that's, that's how I say that, you know, you've said it, it's what you're trying to do, we can't go outside the ordinance. The ordinance doesn't cover a case like this, correct? So therefore, we have to use our guidelines to create a policy to do what we want to do.
Well, but I, to a certain extent, that's what I mean by the board is, is free to follow their policies or not, but.
So we're following our guidelines to, to do something specific. Is that? I mean, I understand, I understand what you're doing, I'm just, I'm not trying to make it, I, I understand what we're doing too. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
You're amending your zoning, you're being asked to amend your zoning map to create this overlay district on this, actually on two properties in two cases.
That's why I took a site specific, but it's to take the two properties, not another property, only on these two.
Yes, that's correct.
Therefore, whatever you're trying to supply to those two properties, correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion on this issue? We'll have Mr. Maxwell first and then Mr. Allen.
Uh, it seems to me that we're going to permit, um, homes in the rural area. This is the type of ground we should be allowing those homes to be built upon and therefore, uh, I'm, I'm gonna support this amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
I'm just a bit confused by some of the comments I've been hearing and I want to make sure I understand the situation correctly. I mean, my understanding is that the LRMP as a, as a set of guidelines was approved by the board and so this issue of, you know, whether it's codified or not, I mean, it is codified, there are, there are potential changes to the zoning ordinance that would come out of the LRMP and many of those have not been made. I mean, zoning ordinance is, there are things, I think, that were anticipated in the LRMP that would result in changes in the zoning ordinance which we have voted against or indicated and will not support. But the LRMP itself is a bundle of guidelines that replaced this earlier, whatever it was called, bills and policies.
That's correct.
And my understanding is that that is something that the county board has accepted and that is what the planning and zoning department is supposed to be informed by. I mean, if we had guidelines in the past to say that because the LRMP hasn't been fully implemented in terms of changes to the zoning ordinance, means that the zoning administrator should base his decisions on, you know, I, I like this guy. No, I mean, we're still gonna have guidelines and my understanding is that the LRMP is those guidelines and if I'm wrong, please let me know.
In my estimation, you're correct. Carol.
I have a basic question that maybe I just could answer. Um, I think I'm starting to understand this a little bit, that they're requesting to build this house in, in a flood plain, um, which has already got houses in this flood plain. I'm, I'm wondering, uh, what the level, and I don't know what the right language is for this, but what the level of flooding is in this area? How often it floods?
Uh, uh, on this lot, the northern half of the lot is above the base flood elevation as determined by the State Water Survey. So on this particular lot, um, again, I misspoke earlier, I apologize for that, but that line of the flood map that the State Water Survey calculated is, is quite irregular, but clearly it doesn't go on the northern half of this property.
Stephanie.
Well, John, no, I, uh, wasn't a big fan of the LRMP and tonight is a perfect example as to why, because nobody understands it.
Can I have some point of order?
So, what I would like to ask.
Point of order called.
What I would like to ask.
Calling for a point of order, which means it has to be recognized by the chair. The point of order is being called because this is not about the LMRP. This is about two specific zoning cases that have already passed the ZBA and I'm asking the chair to rule that out of order so that we can finish these two issues and then you can always put that.
Hi, so, we're not talking about the LRMP here, Stephanie, we're talking about these two zoning cases. Uh, is there any further discussion on this?
May I ask you a question?
You can ask a question. If it has nothing to do with the LRMP.
Thank you. So, let me get this clear in my mind so I have a good understanding. What we're trying to accomplish here this evening is we're trying to give clarity as to whether or not we're going to grant permission to move forward from the zoning board to whether or not there can actually be a domain. Is that correct? Are we, we're giving this person the opportunity to build a home or improve the building that's currently there?
Essentially, that's correct, yes.
Okay, so is there a reason, a good justifiable reason, why we would not give this person the opportunity to build a house or improve the building that's currently there?
The ZBA did not see any reason not to do that.
Thank you, John.
But over, evidence was overwhelmingly supportive of the request.
Thank you.
Okay, um, James, last, last discussion.
I was just gonna call the question.
Okay, there it is. We'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a one on call question? Vote, is it?
Vote, okay.
Is there a second on call?
Is there a second on call the question?
Oh, absolutely.
Second by Mr. O'Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. On, uh, D, zoning case 689-AM-11, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. D, zoning case 690-AM-11, request amend the zoning map to allow for one new residential lot by adding the rural residential overlay zoning district to land in the CR Conservation Recreation Zoning District.
Good approval.
Second. First by Ron, second by Stan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm about to say. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. All right, F. Uh, on your desk, you'll find this proposed zoning changes to the wind farm. Zoning case, uh, directions to zoning administrator regarding proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to amend certain wind farm standard conditions. And you all have distributed items. Uh, if you'd like some discussion on it, you can certainly add a tractor, whatever you, uh, this board cares to do, but this is just direction. We're trying to improve our ordinance for wind farms because in our first instance, which luckily and thankfully we have into wind farm, uh, about to, uh, be built here in Champaign County, uh, we're trying to, um, ease the, some of the problems and concerns that came up during the zoning board of appeals, uh, testimony. You'll find some of the recommendations here to smooth the way and those of you who want to just study this, I know it was just laid on your desk tonight, uh, please do. Uh, if you want to bring any discussion tonight, we can certainly do that, but if you care to, uh, defer this to another time, please do as well so that you can, uh, decide what you feel is comfortable. Uh, discussion starts, Alan.
Yes, I'm moving to defer this so that we can, uh, pretend to read it and, and defer to the next minute.
Okay, second by Stephanie. Uh, any discussion on that? Chris.
If, uh, should you go with permit, I would, uh, I'd like to ask this for all three question, which is, can you, is it your?
Point of order. You can't do that.
Where? Yeah, there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, motion on the floor. Go, go, James.
This is pertinent to deferment, so.
I, I believe I still have the floor. I think it is appropriate to ask a question to inform a vote on the issue of whether or not this needs to be taken up tonight or whether this can be deferred.
Chris, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, is it your intent that these changes encompass all of the conditions that were modified in the special use permit for the California Ridge project or is it more complicated than that?
Actually, it's more complicated than that. That's the easy part.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know.
James.
And then, my question is whether or not there's any urgency that would require us to kick this up sooner than next month?
Uh, not in my mind. Uh, I don't see on the horizon until sometime late in the spring, uh, a new, uh, application coming in from an old wind farm. Uh, I've been, um, informed that there is another company actively, uh, preparing to, uh, to build another wind farm in Champaign County, uh, but that their special, that their application for a special use permit won't come till very late in the spring. So, uh, we do have, uh, at least a couple of four months to discuss this, so I don't think there's an urgency to have it done this evening. All right.
As much as, uh, it seemed to, uh, trying to defer this, I would ask that members of the county board, uh, think about this and, 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 and call attention that, that, that's being approved.
Any other discussion, any improvement? All in favor, defer?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, we have, let's go back. We have for the consent agenda, seven, A, one, two, three, and four, and B. What can we give you? Only C? Okay, only C on the consent agenda. Nominal report on business. All right.
We're adjourned, vote.
We're adjourned.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.